Okay. Yep, all right, let's start this planning commission meeting for Tuesday, April 8. Erica, could you please do a roll call and let folks know how to get in touch with us online?
Sure.
Thank you.
Chair Bluth.
Here.
Vice Chair Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
I'm present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher appears to be absent. Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
And Commissioner Latassa also appears to be absent. I can go ahead and announce our staff members present. We have our community development director, Kim Cole, our planning manager, Levi Hill, our HCD coordinator, Jacob Veronja, our HCD coordinator, Mukhno Abazi, our sustainability manager, Ted Terraces, and myself, recording secretary, Erica Barrera. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/agendas. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you, Erica. So it looks on the, because it looks like on the consent agenda, we have two sets of minutes, February 25th and 11 March. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes?
No.
Nope. Anybody in the chambers have any comments on the minutes? No, anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
Anybody want to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to accept the approval, move to approve the minutes for February 25th, 2025, and March 11th, 2025.
Second.
Can we split this into two because I want to abstain on one of these.
Oh, sure. All right, um, could you redo your?
Move to approve the minutes of February the 25th, 2025.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Erica, could you do a roll call vote for the meeting notes for the 25th of February?
Sure. Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Abstaining.
Okay, Commissioner Brassfield.
I believe I'm abstaining, that one as well, abstaining.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And the minutes have been.
The motion carries with the simple majority of those present for a call.
Great, okay, do you want to do it again for the meeting on the 11th?
Move to approve the minutes for March the 11th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, all right. Erica, could you do a roll call vote for that, please?
Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dawson.
Abstaining.
Okay, and Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, those minutes have been approved as well.
Great, thank you very much. Does anybody in chambers have any points or comment they would like to make on issues that aren't on the agenda for today's meeting? Erica, anybody online?
There are two attendees online with their hands raised.
Okay, could we?
I'll go ahead and allow Brian Rosen to talk.
Please.
Hello, planning commissioners. I wanted to talk to you about the importance of doing more to reduce traffic, particularly, my emphasis is on tourism right now, but also on residents. Back in the 90s, when I used to meet with Sam Karas and Supervisor Strasser Kaufman, the train idea was very popular. Henry Mello was convinced that traffic had gotten so much worse by that time that it would do very well. And every year, he introduced legislation to bring back the train. Traffic was horrible back then, now it's much worse. The city of Monterey, also Dan Albert and others responded to me that they were very interested in the long-term plan of bringing the train back. They were very devoted in those days. Now, it all seems to have been washed aside. It's a very, very busy corridor trying to get up to San Francisco or Santa Cruz. One is stuck in horrendous traffic. So it really is a good corridor and it needs to be done. It's an important corridor and we need to reduce global emissions and our local emissions affecting the bay. A train would be a wonderful way to actually make a real difference. Not that many people are going to come down here on a Greyhound bus or a bus, but a train is something very attractive. And we need you to please get behind this and make this happen. We can make it happen. Big contractors over want to make it more expensive than it has to be. Train Riders Association of California would be happy to work with you to bring down the cost and make this an effective way to get to the Monterey peninsula. You have a wonderful train station, now it's being occupied by a beer garden or something, the old historic train station. But boy, would that be good for tourism, that would be good for the environment, that would help transform Monterey. And it's a real shame that more isn't being done. And I wish you would all really work on bringing back the train to Monterey. It needs to happen. And we can make it happen if we all are, work together. And just like Mr. Mello used to do, whatever happened to that dream? A good inner-city train from Monterey to San Francisco would have tremendous usage. So I would really appreciate it if you, and I know many citizens would like that. It's much more popular than the Surf Busway, which bypasses about four miles of freeway traffic. It's going to cost, now it's over $103 million. This would have connectivity and make a real difference, a big difference. So thank you for listening and I hope you will consider taking a strong stand and bringing back the train and making it happen. That's it for my comment, thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Who's next, Erica?
A caller with the telephone number ending in 705.
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners, Lorna Moffett here. Fuel reduction can seem like a benevolent prospect, but what worries me is the cutting down of trees or the thinning out of forests because science no longer supports that notion. Recently, a judge ruled to stop the US Forest Service from thinning out a national forest site because after careful consideration and delving into the science, found that thinning actually made forests more vulnerable to fires. The wind is a huge factor and thinning allows winds to go between the trees and it also dries out, it also dries out the terrain. Trees, what, big ones, do not burn like little trees do. One of the big reasons we have forest fires is because the timber industry has cut down all the old growth and only 10% of the old growth remains in our country's forests. So I ask you to allow eucalyptus trees to stay as fire breaks and wind breaks they were originally intended for. Angel Island is a good example of how eucalyptus trees actually help to stop an unstoppable fire because when the wind reached the six acres of eucalyptus trees, the dampness from the fog drips saved the day and the buildings behind. And that lesson has been ignored time and time again as the invasive species rhetoric insists that the eucalyptus trees burn hotter and faster than other trees. That's simply not true and anyone who doubts that should read what happened at Angel Island. Also, people are building with wooden fences, tar shingle roofs. Fuel reduction should be focusing on saving trees, discouraging wooden fences, and building materials made of wood. Trees create rainfall through the transpiration of their leaves, it creates dampness. The timber sciency has, the timber science has convoluted our way of thinking to such a degree, people think trees are the problem. Eucalyptus is not the problem, they were planted in the past to stop fires and indeed, they do so as Angel Island has proved. And yet, thousands are being cut down in our area and in an ignorant panic. So Angel Island never had a fire until the Native Plant Society came in and insisted they were a fire hazard and needed to be cut down. So they cut down thousands of them, grasses grew instead, and winds came to the island, which created the perfect fire hazard. A grass fire started with high winds and created an unstoppable fire. Oaks and bays burned, but when it came to the last remaining eucalyptus grove, it was stopped. That's what eucalyptus do and that is an example of how we have been so convoluted to believe they are the problem. So please consider trees and the mighty eucalyptus as essential to stopping fires and climate change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Let's move on to the public appearance items. We have two. First one is recommend planning commission conduct a public hearing and receive public comment on the proposed draft 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan, draft fiscal year 2025-2025 Annual Action Plan, and draft 2025 Citizen Participation Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program and adopt a resolution recommending that city council approve and authorize submittal to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And I'm assuming we'll have a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, planning commission. Thank you for having me here today. Today, we will be presenting on the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan, the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 Annual Action Plan, and the 2025 Citizen Participation Plan that are federal requirement for community development block grant funding. I would like to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Jacob Veronja and I am an HCD coordinator with the City of Monterey's Housing Division. I will also be joined this afternoon by our consultants Veronica Tam and Lori Parrecton from Veronica Tam and Associates. Our recommendation for today's presentation is that the planning commission conducts a public hearing and receives public comments on the proposed draft plans and that a resolution is adopted recommending that city council approves the draft plans and authorizes submission to HUD. I will now hand the presentation over to Veronica Tam and her team to discuss in further details each of the proposed plans.
Thank you, Jacob. This is Veronica Tam of Veronica Tam Associates. We are a housing planning firm that focuses on housing and community development and happy to be helping the city of Monterey. Today, we're talking about the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG. CDBG is a federal program that has some primary objectives. Essentially, CDBG funds are set up to help the community through providing decent housing, creating a suitable living environment, and also fostering economic opportunities. When funding is involved, CDBG funds are involved there, each project or programs that you fund with CDBG funds must meet one of the three national objectives. One being benefiting low and moderate income persons, two, addressing the conditions of slum and blight, and three, meeting a particular urgent need. I do like to specifically define what is considered urgent need under the federal regulation. And it is really relating to a condition that was created 18 months prior to the use of the funds and it's something that is related to a disaster that local jurisdictions would not have any particular ability to address without using the CDBG funds. So it's not something that locally would be considered urgent, but typically, it would be like a disaster like flooding, earthquakes, fires, and conditions that create public health and safety issues that a local jurisdiction does not have the ability to address. When we look at the CDBG funds, the city of Monterey is considered an entitlement jurisdiction. And when you talk about entitlement jurisdiction, you're, that means on an annual basis, the city of Monterey is entitled to receiving some CDBG funds from HUD directly. Your annual entitlement is fairly low at about $250,000 a year as you see in this particular chart. But what is an anomaly with the city of Monterey is that you do have the, you do have previous funding that you have created and people are paying back funding. I think it would be like a loan program or housing rehab loan program or a first-time home buyer program, that people are paying back those funds and that creates program income. The amount of program income you have fluctuates annually and it's not within your control because it really depends on the decision of the people who borrowed the money before, when they do decide to pay back the full loan. And for the up, for the current year, we expect about, we received about $1.4 million. So that can be a similar amount that we anticipate the next year. But as you can see in this chart, in 2023-2024, we only got $450,000 in program income, which makes it sometimes a little bit difficult when you're planning for what you can do in the next few years. CDBG funds are probably the most flexible funds when it comes to the types of activities that you can fund under federal regulations. But it's also the most onerous when it comes to the different kinds of strings attached, what the requirements that you must meet. Typically, the type of things that you can use CDBG funds for are creating and retaining affordable housing, making public improvements, infrastructure and public facility improvements, providing public services or services for persons with special needs or creating economic development opportunities such as jobs, retention and creation. But one thing that is very important to make sure that at least 70% of the CDBG funds has to directly benefit low and moderate income persons. There are also certain considerations when spending funds on CDBG funds. There are some limitations as to how much you can spend. When it comes to planning and administration, only 20% of the allocation of your current year allocation and the projected allocation for the upcoming year, 20% of that can be spent on planning and administration. As I mentioned before, the delivery of programs and services using CDBG funds can be onerous because of the different requirements HUD has. Up to, only up to 20% can be spent on planning and admin. The other cap, funding cap is public services. Because the CDBG program was created under urban renewal, so the funding was really targeted for bricks and mortar type of construction or improvements, not for services. And therefore, HUD only allows up to 15% of your allocation, of your current year allocation and your prior year program income that can be spent on public services. That makes the public service grants fairly competitive on an annual basis. In order to receive these entitlements, even though it's entitled, you're entitled to receive it, you do have to apply for it. And every five year, you have to create, prepare a consolidated plan as an application to HUD for funding. There are specific components of the five-year plan. We must look at the housing and community development needs, look at the market and conditions, look at the city's strategies for promoting affordable housing, addressing homelessness and reducing poverty, prioritizing the funding that you have. And then, on an annual basis, you have to specifically tell HUD exactly which projects and services or programs that you're going to pursue with your annual allocation and program income in the upcoming years. So the five-year consolidated plan would have five annual action plans as part of the overall plan. And currently, we're preparing the five-year consolidated plan for fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029, which covers July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2030. In order to get to, to conduct a housing needs assessment and also to help prioritize funding, the city implemented a very robust community outreach program that involves two stateholder consultation workshops where we, the city invited agencies and organizations that serve low and moderate income persons in the community in order to understand their perspective of housing and community needs in Monterey. The city also conducted two community workshops, I believe, one virtual and two in-person. We also did, the city also conducted five pop-up workshops within, in different neighborhoods. There was also a housing and community development needs survey that the city received 212 responses. The summary of these community outreach activities also provided in the consolidated plan as an appendix. From all the consultation, the needs assessment, also discussion with staff and also the city's prior experience with implementing some of these programs, we have established major four categories of priorities in the consolidated plan. Providing public services that benefit all residents, specifically to the low and moderate income households and persons with special needs. Persons with special needs include the people who are homeless, disabled, elderly, and large households and as well as victims of domestic violence. There are other categories as well. But essentially, as I mentioned before, the majority of the CDBG funds has to benefit low and moderate income persons, either directly providing services assistance or indirectly providing infrastructure and community improvements in neighborhoods that are primarily low and moderate income. To the second priority, these are not in specific order. Just because they're listed 1, 2, 3, 4 doesn't mean one is more important than the other. Expanding and improving affordable housing opportunities, including both rental and ownership housing. So it could be homebuyer assistance, it can be rental assistance, it could acquisition rehab of rental housing or ownership housing. So it just depends on the type of opportunities that open up in the upcoming five years. And to improve public facilities and infrastructures, particularly those that are located in low and moderate income neighborhoods of the city. And finally, certainly to make sure that the city, the program, the programs and activities are delivered in a way that's efficient, effective, and complying with federal regulations. In the upcoming year, as I mentioned before, your entitlement is only estimated at $250,000. And I do want to make a note that HUD has not yet released the amount of allocation that the city will receive as of now. A recent notice from HUD indicates that it probably, we may not know about the exact amount until sometime in May. With the $250,000 in entitlement, the majority of the programs that are going to be funded is really anticipated program income. We're estimating about $1.5 million of program income and it will be used to fund public service grants, public facilities and infrastructure, housing preservation and affordability, and planning administration. This is a, the proposed funding public service grants totaling $189,808 right now and because we have, we do have the funding cap of 15%, this is how we are anticipating funding the different agencies and organizations. The other categories of public facilities and infrastructure, really, the city has established like two tiers of projects. Tier one is the Veterans Transition Center, solar panel installation for $100,000. But other city infrastructure project may get to $140,000 totaling $240,000. But tier one would be the primary commitment. And like I mentioned before, we may not get the program income, exact program income that we anticipated. So this, the adjustment most likely will come from tier two projects, if necessary. Housing opportunities, really, this upcoming year is going to focus on preservation. So we, the city has allocated tentatively 1.2 million, close to $1.3 million for safety, health and safety grants and loans for low and moderate income homeowners. There may be also acquisition rehab of city-owned properties that are, that would want to buy it, buy it back, rehab it, and resell it to low-income first-time home buyers. And that's estimated for one, about $1.3 million. So this is the overall allocation of the overall budget for 2025-2026. There is a cap, but I don't think we're meeting the cap right now. We're not maximizing the administration cap and public service cap mainly because I think program income is generally, we cannot guarantee the exact amount of program income that we will receive in the upcoming year. So this is the, to some extent, this is like a contingency plan. If the actual entitlement and program income, again, because we won't know the entitlement until sometime in May, if the actual entitlement and program income received is. received is more than anticipated, then we, the additional funds would go for, would be allocated to the housing preservation program. And so that, that if we get more, the money would go to housing. But if we get less, the money will likely be taken from other projects and and could be put such as the tier one, the tier two pub, public facility project and public services, if we get less money because there is a fifteen percent cap. If the decrease is such that we, we need to adjust the, the the dollar amount proposed for each jurisdiction, each agency in order to meet the fifteen percent cap. Right now we're not maxing it, but if the dollar amount coming in is less, then we'll adjust it proportionally. Here is a timeline for the overall consolidated plan, action plan and 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 citizen participation plan. The citizen participation plan is really typically required to be reviewed every five years. And and if no changes are made, then then you don't have to do anything about it. Right now, the the city went through the process of issuing the NOFA, Notice of Funding Available to the Public. So the agencies and organization can, can apply for funding. There was an application workshop in November twenty twenty four. Then there was an opportunity on January, on January tenth for these agencies and organizations to do a presentation before the grant committee so that they can advocate the, their, their programs and stress their needs that the agency has. Right now, we have released the draft plan for a thirty day public review. And today is a planning commission public hearing. We anticipate going to the city council on May sixth for the adoption hearing. And typically the deadline to submit the consolidated plan, action plan and all that is May fifteenth. But because we won't know the actual allocation until sometime in May, HUD is giving us additional time after that deadline to submit the, the plan. Because they want to make sure that what we submit would be the actual dollar amount which they will release in May. And citizen participation plan, as I mentioned before, that there is, we are required to just kind of review it every five year to make sure that it complies with the requirement. And so this particular citizen participation plan was reviewed and 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 revised to establish policies and procedures that the city would use to to conduct public consultation and citizen participation in the development and implementation of all these different plans and that the, the citizen participation plan would be submitted with HUD as an appendix to the consolidated plan. With that, I would reiterate the recommendation, or actually Jacob would do that.
Thank you, Veronica. To reiterate our recommendations for today's presentation, we recommend that Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and receives public comments on the draft plans and that a resolution is adopted recommending that the city council approves the draft plans and authorizes submission to HUD. Then in the next slide, we'll include further information such as the address for the HUD website where you can access more information on each of the proposed plans, as well as the contact information for our Community Development Director Kim Cole and Housing Manager Anastasia Wyatt, if there are any further questions. As for that, this now concludes our presentation. I will now turn it over to the Planning Commission for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Great presentation. Any questions? Yes, Pierre?
Thank you for the presentation, Jacob, I'm the consultant. Just out of curiosity, I'm just wondering what the qualifications are for a specific entity to apply for a grant with the housing preservation program. Is it's open to anybody or is it for nonprofit agencies? How does that work?
That's a great question, Vice Chair Silva. In regards to the qualifications, at least for the public service grants, they would typically need to be a nonprofit agency. And as far as the further qualifications, I, I feel like I should defer that a little bit further to my higher up in call.
So I think our public service agencies are pretty well known in our community and they go through the NOFA process. So the, the groups that were awarded were, are recommended for award are like Alliance on Aging, Gathering for Women. So they present to the city through that NOFA process and the committee review what their proposed grant is used for, what their outcomes are, what other grant funding sources that they have. So there's, they're very well known nonprofits that provide service in the city of Monterey.
Is there a requirement for these entities to have a stake in the game in terms of their own funding source?
All of them do. So typically the applications are pretty focused and that, you know, they're only getting ten thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars. They're going to be providing a specific service. And so in their applications, they, they provide a more complete picture of all of the funding for their agency.
Okay. And so the, like, for instance, the housing preservation program would then be applied for by one of these.
Oh, so let me explain a little bit of a difference. So the, what we were describing to you are the public service agencies.
Didn't actually the housing preservation program.
Okay, so typically that is a program for single family owners. They have to prove to us they qualify as low income. Our preservation programs include things like replacing their water heater, maybe getting a loan to replace a whole roof that's leaking. And so it's, we work with the property owner on screening and looking through various bids for it, for things or for improvement projects that are more extensive. And then, you know, look at things like contractors licenses, make sure they get their building permits when needed and help them execute that project. So it's sort of hand in hand. Our staff works with them. That program is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that we give out in actual grants. The remainder of our program, our predecessors did a good job using community development block grant money to help low income families purchase homes in the city of Monterey. Typically, what we're dealing with is the, the persons passed away. Sometimes we'll go through the efforts of getting a receiver appointed through the courts and then repurchasing that unit. And it only goes up by CPI value each year. So usually we're looking at a purchase price somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand. We purchased the unit back. A lot of times they've lived in that unit a long, long time and have aged there. So at a minimum, we're doing new carpet, new painting, maybe new appliances. In some cases, it's more significant rehabilitation. And then we resell that unit to the next qualified low income family on our list. And it's divided by one person, two person, three person households and various income levels. So the, the majority of the one point, I think it was two, seven million dollars will go towards that purchase and resale program. We typically, we typically have about two to three that turn over a year. The reason why you saw that real drop in income a couple of years ago is we didn't have housing staff and we had to go through a recruitment process to hire people so we could actually rehabilitate the units and resell them. So we didn't have enough staff resources to do that. We're now fully staffed again. And so we have two or three units that we're getting ready to sell. So we're thinking we'll meet our income projections.
And is this the, the various people that are on this list, is that a lottery or is that first come, first served? How does that list?
Yeah, so we typically put advertisements in the newspaper. People submit an application and it's first come, first serve on that list. You're allowed to reject a unit three times before you go to the bottom of the list. So sometimes somebody doesn't, it's usually a condominium, don't like that particular unit or maybe they're not ready to purchase it. And then, you know, they'll reject it two times and they'll take it the third time. If they reject it a third time, then they go to the bottom of the list and it's first come, first served.
Okay. Thank you, Kim.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mike.
We're talking about a, a portion of the population that is in need of services. And every year it comes to the commission for us to look at this distribution and for the public hearing. Is there a model of a program that shows the results of the individual associated participants versus the city's needs? What I'm getting at is, is there accumulation of accomplishments by the, the holistic program to meet the needs of the city? And is it reported in a factual report? That might help us look at these individual portions of this program and how it fits into the public need.
That's a great question, Commissioner Brassfield. Every year we do typically present both to the Planning Commission and City Council regarding the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, it's known as the CAPER. So that is one of those reports where we reflect more on the findings that happen each year and the results of the funding that is typically allocated and distributed through the Community Development Block Grant Program. So there is that as well. As far as a model, I'm not too familiar personally on any different circumstances that would go into the specific.
I understand if cities were different.
Yeah. But as far as like a report that is provided directly by the city in regards to the direct allocation of funding and, you know, who it helps within the city, that would be the main report that, you know, could be followed up on or reviewed.
For the discussion, I, I think that that would be helpful if, when we get this project come before us, we had the results of last year's program. So we can do a comparison to see where we I don't think that we can fix all the problems. I'm not suggesting that. But it might help ask questions of the program to make sure that we're getting as much as we can squeeze out of the small amount of funds that goes to help these needed groups. And when I see that nationally, we're not improving our homeless population. And now we have the governor saying that we have to remove them from the streets. How are we accomplishing that? And that's what I'm talking about is we need to look at this whole issue holistically to see what the public can tell us their thoughts are. So that we can document that into the report that goes forward. Is there anything, any help there? Kim?
Well, I think as Jacob shared with you, each year we're required under HUD regulations to publish a performance evaluation of all the funds expended and the exact households and the number of households that were assisted through each program. So it's a very, and then our results are uploaded into the HUD system. So there's a direct accountability on how many households are served. You know, the issue you're discussing more broadly about homelessness and
There's one segment.
Yeah, I mean, so the purpose of this plan is to identify needs and to provide at least one funding source to trying to help meet those needs. I mean, you're seeing in the project before you today, homelessness is identified as a priority. The city's proposing public service grants to Gathering for Women, Casa de Noche Buena and Sherman Hart, Sherman Hart House, as well as money towards Veterans Transition Center. So four of the agencies that you're contemplating in this plan provide services to homeless. So this plan prioritizes homeless services. It is not the complete answer. It's only one of the funding sources that we can use.
But I think that, thank you. But that's what I'm talking about is that we acknowledge the fact that we have a problem. And I, we're now looking at a budget issue of, for funds and distribution. But I think that we would be better, we could better make that decision if we had that report in front of us. And particularly when you work on a five year plan. I mean, and are we have identified among all the needs, additional needs that maybe we need to massage a little bit into this solution, mechanism. Have we?
So yes, I mean, this report includes an analysis of a whole variety of factors. As Ms. Tam represented, it looks at domestic violence. It looks like at a whole bunch of categories. And based on population analysis and characteristics, it's putting forth a strategy to address those issues. So I guess I, I, I believe that this report provides a strategy on looking at a wide variety of social factors and a financing plan to begin to address those issues. It doesn't address them a hundred percent. And you know, maybe to address your concern about the results, maybe one of your recommendations out of the Planning Commission to the council is that we provide more information on last year's funding and the results from the funding to those agencies. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. You wish that we had incorporated that into this report. It's a separate report, but we could put that in our presentation to the city council.
And that's where I'm going. I, like I said, when it's, it's not just dry reading, it, it shows need. But I just get a little frustrated of, are we addressing those needs? Changing or modifications of needs? And we don't have the, the data to make any comparison. So that would be helpful in any motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody in chambers have a comment to make on the presentation, please?
I've, I've been here forty two years and I don't think I've ever been to a planning commission meeting. City council, yes. But I hear housing, low cost housing in this federal proposal. Is this called the block? I see in the newsletter, I'm here because I see the block grant. Is this what this is? Why, I don't know why it's called a block grant. I have no idea. It's all new. So my questions are, I'm a taxpayer. I'm going to pay my taxes on April fifteenth to the federal government. I've seen where in the last two or three months where my federal taxes have been spent. And I'm not happy about it. I don't know about Monterey as far as the federal funds. But I do know there's a housing shortage in the city of Monterey due to the rental registry. And I don't know how that fits in with the federal funds, et cetera. But people are selling their houses that have rent properties. So that's a housing shortage. And another thing that really irritates me, and I don't know who paid for it, is a bike trail on Fremont. Now, I don't know if federal funds from your federal grants go to things like the bike trail on Fremont. I think in the last on Fremont. I think in the last five, maybe 10 years, I've seen two bicycles on there. And that's a waste, the worst waste of money. I, I can't even fathom who approved that. Do you guys, do you, does the planning commission approve things like that? Am I allowed to ask?
You can't ask those questions. You can make your public comment and then, you know, we
But anyway, my, my point is I don't want my money wasted. I'm a taxpayer. I'm paying my huge taxes April 15th, and I have seen in the last three months how federal taxes have been obliterated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Anybody else in chambers? Erica, anybody online?
There are attendees online. However, I do not see any hands raised. But once again, information on participating in this meeting is online at monterey.gov slash agendas. There are still no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. I'll pull it back. I was lucky to be on the review panel that Kim chaired to go over all the proposals that were part of this package and unfortunately, it's just a small amount of money with a gigantic problem like Mike mentioned. But I mean, the, the funds that we're contributing, although small, I think are going to provide a major impact. I just wish they could be substantially more resources that are available to devote to it. And we should be grateful that the community is supporting these organizations and we're throwing in a little bit on top of it to provide some support on, on the city's side. But clearly, it's something the city put a lot of time and effort into looking at. And I just wish they had more money to play with to, you know, work this issue. Any other comments?
I agree with what you just said. I, I somehow in the back of my mind, I can't help but wonder how Elon is going to do a slash and burn with HUD and how that impacts these types of programs. But I guess we shall see.
Yeah. Or if it will exist. Yeah. Yeah. And even with funding from HUD, it's a small amount. You start looking at the amount of money that we get with the problems that we're facing in the city. I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's other cities in the country or in California that are even more challenged than, than we are. But you know, you, you look at what these organizations are doing, they clearly have a, a need that they're trying to satisfy and it's just unfortunate that we don't have more resources that we can give to them to, to help them with their mission. So. Any other comments? Yes, Mike?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we accept the recommendation on here. We pass on to city council. But I would also like to add that we, we ask for the information of the accomplishments from the previous year so that we can do any kind of a measure and comparison. How are we doing as a city? And that'd come before this commission and council as a recommendation.
I'll second that.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. Erica, could you please do a roll call?
Sure. Chair, please.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, you have, okay, and that's it. And motion carries.
Great, thank you. So the next public appearance item is recommend the planning commission to conduct a public hearing and
Thank you.
receive public comment on proposed draft financial year 2025 analysis of implements of fair housing choice and adopt resolution recommend the city council approve and authorize submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Do we have a staff presentation for that? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Thank you so much for having me here today. We're here to present the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, proposed draft fiscal year 2025. So analysis of impediments provide an overview of the laws, policies, and practices that may hinder our residents' ability to find housing in the city. And as a recipient, the city being the recipient of CDBG funds that my colleague Jacob Varanha and Ms. Veronica Tam talked about, as a recipient of CDBG funds, the city is required to update and develop an AI as required and submit to HUD. Next slide, please. Thank you. Would you mind going back, please? Thanks. Staff introduction. My name is Manurabasi. I am the Housing and Community Development Coordinator here at the Housing Division at the city of Monterey. And joining me this afternoon is Karen Chavez. She's joining us online via Zoom. She's a planner and she's a planner with the DIAID and BADA Urban and Regional Planners, and she is part of the consultant group that helped us prepare this draft report that we're presenting to you today. Next slide, please. Recommendation, our recommendation is that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and receive public comments on the proposed draft. Number two, adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the draft report and authorize submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Next slide, please. And with this, I will hand the presentation over to Karen.
Thank you, Manur. So good afternoon, everyone. As mentioned, my name is Karen Chavez and I am from DIAID and BADA. And I will be discussing the AI report today. So before we get started, I wanted to present an overview of what's in store for the presentation. I'll be discussing what an AI report is, what is the need, and what are the contents of an AI report. I'll also provide an outreach overview, key impediments identified, and corresponding actions to those impediments. I will then hand it back to Manur to discuss next steps. For context, the AI report is the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. This is a federally required document, as Manur discussed, for all jurisdictions that receive federal funding. As the city of Monterey is a recipient of both community block grant funding, CDBG funding, as Veronica mentioned earlier, as well as the Home Investment Partnership Program, this document is required to receive these funds. Essentially, this report identifies conditions that would prevent individuals or groups from accessing housing opportunities on a fair and equal basis. So this report sets out actions to remove and reduce these barriers and in such promoting fair housing for all. So I would also like to define fair housing choice. So fair housing choice means that individuals and families have the information, opportunity, and options to live where they choose without unlawful discrimination based on the following protected characteristics. These are 13 protected characteristics under both the federal and state governments. So an example of housing discrimination would be the refusal to permit a reasonable modification at a disabled tenant's expense, you know, for adding a ramp or a safety bar in a shower when necessary to accommodate such disability. And such relating to Monterey, the cost of housing and availability of housing types can also be an impediment to fair housing choice. Lower-income households often have to look for housing far away from their job or choose substandard housing close to their occupations, which may not be the healthiest. So housing costs limit lower-income households in where they can look for housing. The report is composed of nine total chapters. It presents a demographic and housing profile of the city. It details community engagement efforts, and it also assesses the extent of fair housing issues amongst specific groups. Most importantly, the report includes a fair housing action plan, which is chapter nine. And this identifies key impediments to fair housing based on the analysis and the outreach that we've conducted. And it also includes a suite of actions to address them. So throughout the project, we engaged a variety of residents with a variety of methods. We conducted stakeholder interviews within the housing community to gather insight on fair housing conditions and issues. We also hosted a community workshop for residents where we discussed challenges and opportunities to further fair housing. And we also conducted a pop-up outreach at key locations in the city. And we gathered information via a resident survey that was available in December and January. So moving on to the key impediments in no specific order, these four impediments include housing supply and affordability, displacement risk and supportive services, discrimination, and lastly, regional collaboration, which I will then further discuss in detail. So first up is housing supply and affordability. There's an underproduction of housing in the city due to a lack of adequate water supply and to an extent regulatory and process requirements. So as a result, prices for rent and for sale homes have gone up, causing this affordability issue. And so the action plan notes a suite of housing element programs that can bolster the, the supply. But in addition to these programs, there's an additional action where the city can collaborate with the Housing Authority of Monterey County. So this collaboration would then develop outreach to specific or just landlords in general to expand supply of privately owned affordable housing through what is known as Section 8, or now is called Housing Choice Vouchers. This could open up supply to protective classes such as lower-income families, older adults, and veterans hoping to find housing. The second impediment that we analyzed was the, was displacement risk and services. So there is a risk of current residents being priced out and displaced from their homes. Certain neighborhoods in Monterey are a bit more vulnerable, so such as Old Town and Downtown are more, yeah, are more at risk of displacement due to a high cost of housing as well as competing needs. And so oftentimes, residents are juggling costs such as transportation, childcare, and home repairs, which may, which may put them at a risk of displacement in the event of an unfortunate event such as unemployment or an unexpected expense. And so the action plan includes four, four actions to address this impediment. One way to prevent people from becoming homeless is expanding the rental assistance and having the city connect folks to organizations that offer shallow subsidies. These shallow subsidies are small amounts of money that can be used in an emergency to help people cover costs in a given month. In addition to this, the city will continue to administer and manage the Housing Rehabilitation Program, which can provide funding for home repairs. And the city will also continue to work with community-based organizations to connect residents in need of relevance, supportive services, such as, such as transportation assistance and preventative health. The third impediment of the action plan targets discrimination. So minorities are underrepresented in the pool of housing loan applications relevant to their share of the population. And additionally, parts of the Monterey Peninsula also have a high concentration of white residents, and as a result, have a low share of ethnic minorities. So the action plan outlines for actions to continue efforts to raise awareness of fair housing rights and responsibilities in the community. Some of the actions include an annual fair housing workshop about supportive resources. And another action would be expanding access to aid for residents in need of counseling and legal services. Lastly, another action would also include partnering with real estate and housing professionals to conduct training on fair housing practices. And lastly, many issues discussed in the report and here today, you know, homelessness, affordability, the affordable housing, jobs, house imbalance, and access to transit service are regional issues that require collaboration amongst communities in the region. And so the action plan sets out that the city will continue to participate in these regional initiatives and will continue to partner with regional organizations to address the housing-related issues and as well to increase the supply of affordable housing in Monterey. I will now hand over the presentation to Manur to discuss next steps.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Karen. To go over the next steps, our draft AI report was released for public review beginning April 4th, 2025, which was last Friday. And then, as we meet today at the Planning Commission for our first public hearing regarding the AI draft report. And then our next step is our upcoming public hearing at the city council, which is on May 6th, 2025. And then the last step of the process would be for us to submit our report to HUD on May 15, 2025. Next slide, please. I would like to reiterate our recommendation to Planning Commission. The first is to conduct a public hearing and receive public comments on the proposed draft AI report. And two is to adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the draft report and authorize submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Next slide, please. This slide provides on how to get more information. More information on the analysis of impediments, why it's required, and the, the different steps of the process are available on the HUD website, hud.gov. And then we're also available as resources. Kimberly Cole, our Community Development Director, as well as Anastasia Wyatt, our Housing Manager, are available if additional clarification or information is needed on the process. Next slide, please. And with that, I would like to conclude our presentation. And any questions and public comments are welcome, and I appreciate you having us presenter today. Thank you.
Thank you. What a great presentation. Any questions? Anybody in chambers have any questions or comments? Yes, please.
I'm Thomas Lampfier from the Veterans Transition Center. So I really take to heart what you said about metrics. Numbers do matter. And so for our program, having to do with solar panels, disturbing thing is happening that is affecting the city of Monterey right now. Federal pick count said it's 144 homeless veterans in Monterey County. And just in city of Monterey alone, this year, we've had over 40 come into our program. And so as the summer heats up, we know more veterans are going to transition in. And the type of veterans that are coming in now are more disabled veterans. These are veterans who require type 2 diabetic medication to be refrigerated. They need electronic devices for mobility. They're on CPAP machines. The veteran population is aging. And so having a place for them to go where we can get them off the streets and out of the city of Monterey into a housing program with that would lead to permanent supportive housing would definitely show a number that we could contrast with last year. I have the numbers. I'd be more than happy to submit them to Kimberly, what we have had veterans transition from Monterey into our program to kind of set a baseline that we can use a comparison for future years on how funding is going to impact the homeless veteran population in the city of Monterey. We thank you for your support. We thank you for your recommendations also.
Thank you for your comment. Please. It's for, um, the item that we just received the presentation on for
The housing, right?
Oh, yes, please. Yeah.
Yes. I just want to learn them off it here. I just wanted to say that I tried to dial in at the previous item that you had. I raised my hand, but for some reason, it wasn't acknowledged. And I know that you wanted to hear from the public about the housing, so I'd like to comment on that, but I can utilize that comment for here. Basically, I've been watching the homeless lately and I call all the places help. Oneovista, they're, it's an answer machine. So if you're a homeless person, you're not going to get it. And then you do have to register. And same with all the other shelters now. They don't answer the phone. The only time they'll answer the phone is if it's a police, then they'll answer the phone. So that's something that needs to be rectified. And Congressman Panetta said about three years ago that if you all wrote letters, city officials and supervisors wrote letters and asked for help to open up an armory like they have in Santa Cruz where the homeless could go with their tents and pets and sleep there as they do in Santa Cruz, that would greatly diminish that, that situation. I don't know how you're going to afford, especially in this climate, all the housing that needs to be developed. all the housing that needs to be developed, not need, should not be developed because we can't, we don't have the water, and we have to fight back to the governor and say we don't have it and we're not going to do it. And we have a valuable bay out here that is dying because of over-traffic and over-consumption and everything. So it's very important that we supply at least a place where these homeless can go. And so in Santa Cruz, they have this armory. We could do it at Fordord, and Panetta said he would be willing to work with you on that, where they can go and they can get three showers a day, and they can get meals, and it works very well. So I think we have to do that and consider trailers and that kind of a thing. Trailers are wonderful. I live in my trailer in the summer and it's wonderful. So I think we have to be very realistic, but we can't let these people die on the street, and that's what's happening now. And three years ago, five homeless men died, and no one reported it. And the homeless themselves said that they, their buddies had died, and no one did anything about it. So I just talked to a homeless person in the park, and he's disabled, and he's also mentally ill. So he has real problems and no one's doing anything about it. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in chambers want to make a comment? Erica, anybody online?
Brian Rosen has his hand, their hands raised. I will go ahead and allow them to speak.
Thank you.
Hello again, planning commissioners. There is a lot of, I've seen a homeless veteran. He was in terrible shape. Nobody seemed to want to help him. And I know the businesses don't really like those kind of people out there because they think it makes it unattractive to tourism. And there's always this conflict between wanting to help people and what some in the business community want. Are we going to keep building forever to accommodate a growing population? More and more will probably be under homeless, under Trump's economy where he's cutting virtually all the services to the people while helping Elon Musk get billion-dollar contracts. Things could get a lot worse. Airbnbs take away a lot of housing. That could go for housing. Again, we have a billionaire at the top who gets a little percentage of the profit. Now, as far as trailers are concerned, I like what Ansel Adams said about how removable dwellings don't have to make a permanent scar on the landscape. That was, he was talking about Yosemite. I think that's probably a good idea to not have the homeless all over the place, but to have a certain area they can go to, like a campground with tents, showers, and they can be asked to do their part to be there. You know, keep things clean, volunteer in the community. I think that's fair. For those who are desperately mentally ill or in very bad shape, obviously, they can't do very much. A society is judged by how it treats its weakest members. Look how we treat animals. Look how we treat the poor. I believe the weakest members should be our highest priority. Although, of course, we need housing for different income levels. I would like to see a focus on the lowest, the weakest and most vulnerable of all. People freeze a few warming places, fire pits or something similar to what they, I don't know if they still have it at the Forge in the Forest. We used to sit around the fire pit back in the day. I don't know, the 80s, 90s. And we need to not have people die from exposure. But it would be nice, I don't think we want to keep growing forever, and there's, we need to take advantage of empty buildings and give incentives for people to open up those buildings. And we certainly need to take care of all the people. It doesn't have to mean giant growth, but we need to take care of the people. That is very, very important. And we aren't going to have enough money to do all kinds of buildings. That's not realistic. But a little, in Ojai, there's a little campground there and right by City Hall where lots of people set up their tents. We, then it's in one area, and those people who most need help can get help. And there are some good people. Not everyone is a riffraff who's homeless. Some rich people are riffraffs. You can just look at who's running the country right now. So, you know, I think we just need to really, really emphasize some way to help the most vulnerable and the weakest in a.
Thanks, Erica. Anybody else online?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, well, why don't we bring it back? Any discussion? Just to follow up with what I said before, I think the city is really trying to do its best on these issues and resources really are limited. But I think the police department and city staff that I've had discussions with that are trying to make recommendations on some of the proposals from the previous presentation. And then obviously, what, you know, we're hearing in this one, we're trying to make sure that people have an opportunity for fair access to housing. It's a big problem, but I think, you know, what can be done, which is not a lot, is being done. So I think we should be grateful for what the city is attempting to do here. Chair Mike.
And I'll make the same suggestion. We look at what we're getting here, and we're making recommendations to council. It would be nice if we had something to judge the success of whatever program we have in it, no matter how little it is. So if we could have whatever results that the city program has come up with to make the recommendation for the following year included in this recommendation.
Mike, I think that's going to be somewhat difficult in this.
I'm sorry?
I think that's going to be somewhat difficult here because unlike the first report, this one is speaking more about broader impediments. And, okay, let's look at one of the impediments, which is affordability. And of course, you know, it had the problem and what the solution or what the programs that would address this would be. But how would you go about having that monitored?
Well, Peter, may I suggest that even showing the impediments, illustrating them, so that when people ask council, why aren't we doing it? Then they have a list of not only what possible successes they have, but some of the principal impediments to any greater success. Because that's, I think we're all seeing that we're not making a lot of success, and we're, we're in an area that costs more to live than other places. So that's, that's obviously one of those impediments. But to articulate them in recommendations as they, as they come to us to make to council and from council to discuss it with the public, I just think it would be helpful. And just doing this report and say that this is where we're at. So I just, I don't know what anybody else thinks. I just think it'd be helpful.
Maybe a way of looking at it could be that, I know Kim might be able to provide more details on this, but city staff is out in various venues, trying to get the word out for the different means of making housing more available, more affordable. Maybe those statistics, you know, where they're at the farmer's market, how many times they're there, what type of feedback they're getting from the community. Is that something that we keep track of, Kim?
We do keep track of, like, we do fair housing workshops, so and we have both typically for tenants as well as property owners. We could include that. You know, that was one of the things we need to continue to do is to reach out to those groups. So we could include information on how many people have attended our tenant landlord workshops.
Right, but I think what Mike is speaking towards is the results of these programs that are being submitted to HUD. You know, the impediment has been identified. Here's what we're going to do about it. And what Mike is, I think, suggesting, I don't want to take words out of your mouth, but is what are, what are the consequences of these actions that city is taking?
So we can, we have that report for the, you know, that we publish every year on the exact results of our action plan implementation. We do have that.
That's what I'm thinking. If it was included in whatever goes to council for them to take their vote, that's called an informed decision versus just reporting on what somebody else did some other time. It just seems helpful.
And we can clearly include a link in the staff report and maybe summarize some of the key results from the previous year.
So based on that, I'll make that motion that go to council, that we've had our hearing, and that we suggest that they look at this portion of a report to improve their information base when they make the vote.
Do we have a second? Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Is, is doing something like this going to delay the supplemental process?
No, I mean, we're well on our, that report's already written. It's already published. It's something we do. I think what Commissioner Brassfield's suggesting is that we link that as an information source within our staff report. It's already published, so it's easy enough to do.
Second.
Right. So we have a motion in a second. Erica, could you please do a roll call?
Sure. Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries with a vote of five.
And thank you for all the presentations that staff provided today. So we have one more item on the list. It is receive a presentation on the development of the 2025 Climate Action Plan.
Hello, Chair Bluth and members of the commission. My name is Ted Terasus. I'm the Sustainability Manager for the city of Monterey. And very happy to be here actually, and finally bringing our new Climate Action Plan update to you. It's been a little overdue. We kind of ran into some, some issues along the way, a pandemic and some other setbacks that kind of set us back a little bit from doing an update, but we did get some good work with Ambag and things done in the meantime to keep track of where we were. But ultimately, where we are now is looking at a full new Climate Action Plan. And just to kind of be clear, a climate action plan is really about mitigating our impacts to the climate. And as you talk, there's very clear differences between mitigation and adaptation when you talk about climate. If you make a medical analogy, mitigation would be more like actually curing or minimizing the disease, whereas adaptation is sort of treating the symptoms and trying to do best you can with what's the ultimate causes of the disease. And in this case, that's things like the frequency, increasing frequency and intensity of weather events, sea level rise, increasing displacements of humans, other kinds of issues that are impacting health and that sort of thing based on rising temperatures, throwing off balances throughout the entire planet. So the idea with the Climate Action Plan is to evaluate where you are as a jurisdiction and, and make mitigations to reduce those impacts. And really, it's kind of three main parts to that. Really, you start out, the main thing you do with the Climate Action Plan is start out with a greenhouse gas inventory, right? You find out where you are. How big is the problem? Where are your major areas? So that you know what to focus on when you start moving forward or how to plan mitigations. The next part after that is, is really kind of basing goals on established regulations and law, and we'll kind of get into that with our presenter today. And finally, you start getting into mitigation measures based on those goals. So once you know where you're at and what your goal is, you can start establishing goals and programs that will put in, you can put in place to make those cuts you need to hit your goals. And that's really what a climate action plan is all about. And in order to do this new update and sort of modernize some of the industry standards, the city's chosen to work with Rincon Associates, who's done over 80 climate action plans around the state of California and has really great background doing that. So we were looking forward to working with them, and we have been working with them throughout the year to update this plan. So we were going to turn it over to them. Today, we have Eric Feldman and Erica Linard, who are with us online, who will provide a presentation to us on, on the Climate Action Plan.
Excellent. Thank you. Is our screen showing?
There you go. Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm Erica Leonard. It's great to be here this, this afternoon. Thanks for having us. I'm a supervisory planner at Rincon Consultants. Worked on a number of climate action plans and really excited to be working at the city of Monterey. And as Ted mentioned, we also have Eric Feldman, the principal of our Climate Action Planning Group online as well. And let's see if my screen moves over. All right, here we go. So just a little bit of what we're going to walk through the day. I think Ted already hit on all these different items, but we do want to touch on the 2016 cap, the climate goals that were achieved there, the successes and progress that have been made, what the 2025 cap is working towards, some initial results that we have, as well as start talking about measures and actions, the engagement plan we have throughout this, and then our next steps. So the city of Monterey developed a cap in 2016. It had the measures that followed key sectors, building energy, including both residential and commercial buildings, as well as transportation, with the focus on on-road transportation, as well as solid waste emissions from the city government that are kind of a subsector of all these emissions, as well as some emissions from water and wastewater. And the various different measures that were included were either existing programs, some general strategies, as well as some of the estimates of how to reduce those emissions moving forward. So before that, and since the cap, the city has made a number of different achievements and progress working towards these type of efforts. This includes energy retrofits with over, with about 2 million kilowatt hours of energy saved since 2007. Also, the development of the Direct to Access Program, allowing folks to be able to choose a third-party energy vendor and be able to access that 100% renewable energy. Some solar power generation occurring within the city, becoming a founding member of the Central Coast Community Energy Group in 2018. This is one of those community aggregation groups where you're able to access 100% clean energy. So you're able to get that more renewable source of energy than what's coming from the grid, with a really high enrollment rate in the city of about 96%. We've also, there's been a transition of EVs to, or the fleet vehicles over to EVs and hybrid vehicles, with about 13 vehicles being converted. And then a number of different solid waste initiatives, such as the polystyrene ban for takeout food, plastic bag ban, ordinance on disposable foodware, and then enforcement of the state regulations, including AB 341, 1826, and 1383. Overall, greenhouse gas emissions, looking at the 2005 inventory that was used as the target setting baseline for the cap or the 2016 cap, and then looking at the most recent inventory that was prepared for the city under that same kind of methodology. There was about a 20% decrease in greenhouse gas emissions, so achieving that 2020 goal that the state set for 2020. So moving forward and now kind of having that great baseline for reaching the 2020 goal, we're moving into kind of the next chapter of climate laws and legislations, and that's really what's guiding this 2025 cap update. This will be working towards the Senate Bill 32, which is really our, our next nearest goal of reaching a 40% reduction below 1990 emission levels by 2030. Just a quick recap, the AB 32 for the 2020 goal was to actually reach those 1990 levels. So now we have an additional 40% to go below. Also, to set the stage for reaching the 1279 goals, which is achieving net zero or carbon neutrality by 2045, implementing to meet the Senate Bill 100, which takes into account having zero carbon electricity by 2045. And then in continuing to enforce bills like Senate Bill 1383, which will divert 75% of organic waste from landfills by 2025 from those 2014 levels. So the state laws require that jurisdictions do their fair share of greenhouse gas emissions and able to, to help the state meet their state goals. Really what this means is taking a look at what are the emissions that the community members and the city contribute, and then addressing those emissions with developing measures and actions to reduce emissions that they actually. Addressing those emissions with developing measures and actions to reduce missions that they actually have control over or jurisdiction over. So this would include emissions coming from building energy use, transportation, waste. But it's going to exclude things where there's limited jurisdictional control, which may be certain industries in which the state kind of oversees and controls. And this, so this 2025 cap is really focused on establishing those actions to work towards that 2020, 2030 goal. And then showing kind of the, the next step to get to 2045, knowing that. There's going to be some technology advancements, legislation advancements and various other things that need to go into place for that carbon neutrality goal in 2045. Overall, the cap framework, first you do your greenhouse gas analysis to kind of set the stage for what you're looking at, this includes. Doing an updated 2023 greenhouse gas inventory using the. Industry standards of today, the current best practices incorporating all of that in, forecasting out emissions, revising and setting targets for the. Current state goals that we're aiming for. And then once knowing kind of the picture of the greenhouse gas emissions, working into strategy development, establishing measures and actions. Moving into drafting and finalizing the cap and then at the end of all of that, monitoring and tracking progress so that you're able to kind of report back on. How, how you're doing with meeting those actions and adjusting the cap if needed, if you're not staying on track. Part of this is to incorporate the community and stakeholder feedback throughout the entire process. With a lot of this, these actions really focusing on, once we get into the target setting and measure development, to make sure that. Community voices and stakeholder voices are heard and being incorporated into the cap. Our kind of estimated timeline is we kicked off earlier this year and right at the beginning of the year. We've been going through data collection, working through that greenhouse gas analysis portion of the work. Now in the spring, we're finishing out that greenhouse gas analysis with the inventory forecasted targets, beginning some engagement events. And a little bit later in the spring, we'll start some measuring actions and strategy development. Early summer be finalizing those measures and actions, kind of finalizing out with some of our engagement pieces. Moving into some of the sequel components of this in early fall with finalization of the cap in December. Along the lines of all of this, along with our engagement events, we have our, this first meeting of our planning commission meeting. And then a city council meeting coming up next week. And then additional having city council meetings later on when we get into the measure developments and such. And kind of continuing to have that engagement and discussions surrounding measures and actions and, and what's going into the cap. Really today is largely a, an introduction to where we're at, but we'll have more, more engagement moving forward. Just to touch on some of the initial results from the greenhouse gas analysis, the 2023 greenhouse gas emission inventory was drafted. This is the most recent year that has a complete set, a full set of data. This inventory was developed using current best practices. And that just, some of the methodologies since the previous inventory has changed a little bit, so this is incorporating in. Those methodology changes, best practices, it's also added in a couple of sectors that are recommended to be included. And moving into developing new targets and new measures, we wanted to make sure that those were added in, so this includes off-road equipment. Loss, electricity losses from transmission and distribution, methane leakage from the pipeline associated with building. Natural gas use and then some emissions from wastewater. Also some of the other methodology changes occurring here are use of big data for traffic data. We're using a software called Replica, this is essentially a tool or that is taking. Data real time of what's occurring with VMP, it's a little bit of a, a transition from typically used travel demand models. But it's something that's being used more and more common throughout the state for caps because you're able to. Really see in real time what's happening with your on-road traffic and how it changes in response to measures, so it's a really nice tool to use. With this 2023 inventory, this will serve as the new baseline for future forecasting and also the target setting of 2030 and 2045 targets. And just to note, you know, something that's pretty similar to the previous inventory, on-road transportation is still the. Primary emission source from the community, we also have building energy, both the natural gas usage. And electricity contributing a large portion to the inventory. With the building electricity energy, right now there's a little bit of a spike in what the emissions are coming from, from that, and that's just something I wanted to bring up here. You know, switching over to 3CE has been a big benefit for the City of Monterey, there's been an opportunity to really reduce emissions coming from electricity. In 2022, kind of past the last inventory that was developed for the City of Monterey. 3CE has switched how they're obtaining their renewable energy and they're moving towards more local contracts. Causing just a, a short-term spike in their emission factor, but that'll come back down and is, is starting to come back down. As those renewable energy projects come online, so for this current inventory, we see a little bit of an increase in that building electricity. Compared to what we've seen in the past. So once we get all of our greenhouse gas analysis wrapped up, then we move into measure and action development. This is a really iterative process and where we like to really work closely with the city and stakeholders and the community to gain a lot of. Feedback and make sure that the strategies that are being developed are really taking into consideration the, the vision that the community has. And that the, the community can stand behind and go for, so we have these large picture strategies that are. Focused over the different sectors, followed up and kind of supported with measures that are more of your specific long-range policies. Of how to, how to achieve greenhouse gas reductions with pretty specific items such as. Reducing emissions within the existing building sector or reducing emissions in new building sector and kind of specifying a specific goal there. And then each measure is supported by a series of actions, which is really the stepping stones of actually implementing that. Program or implementing all the steps necessary to make that measure achievable and be successful. Throughout our time as working on these climate action plans, we've come to see and learn what are some. Key criteria that really need to be part of that action development, this is very similar to kind of the, the concept of. Smart metrics or using things like specific measurable. Having a timetable, all of those different components for. Action purpose, developing the actions of a measure for a climate action plan, what we've seen is really essential to help. Increase effectiveness is to have each of these key components as part of your, your actions, this includes things like. Structural change, which could be something like an ordinance or. A resolution, something that's really kind of triggering that change, the, having partnerships with key partners that can help. Implement the measure and the actions necessary. Funding, identifying where the funding is coming from to make sure that these measures and actions are able to be funded and to occur. We know that that's always a big barrier. Conducting the feasibility and pilot studies so that know where the project can occur, when it can occur, what's needed, all of those pieces. Education and engagement, make sure that, you know, community members are doing what they can do on their side and that the information is out there. And then also of course having equity so that as these measures and actions are getting implemented, that it's not causing an imbalance or causing a. Equity concern with how the measures and actions are being implemented. So we mentioned that during this process and we've kind of started it. Just over the last month or so is kind of our engagement plan to help collect this feedback from the community. This includes a couple of different techniques, things like community pop-ups, in-person community pop-ups, having. Community engagement workshops that are going to focus more intensely on getting feedback surrounding measures and actions. Having focus group meetings where we meet with community groups or business groups kind of. Specified groups that have a high profile in the community and a lot to, to say. We also use surveys both online and in person so that we can access folks. That may not have been able to come to these in-person events, as well as the online engagement to make sure that the community knows what's happening and where it's happening. We actually have one of our pop-up events occurring today at the farmer's market, kind of at the same time that we're here, so that's, that's exciting. And we were able to start our first pop-up at the cutting day. I think a week or so ago, where we issued just a, the city was able to bring a brief survey that was largely just introducing the cap. We had eighty-three survey respondents, just want to note that, you know, this isn't representative of the entire community, that is why we're continuing to collect. Information throughout this entire process, targeting different communities, different areas. You know, trying to make sure that we can get as many voices heard as possible. And the survey that we asked, this is just an example of some of the different things we asked, this was kind of focused on. You know, how the, how the community or the, the respondents felt that Monterey was prepared for climate change. Most respondents said either slightly or moderately prepared, which means that it's a good sign, they're, they're well aware of all the steps that have been. Occurring and kind of the efforts going forward. We asked what kind of strategies folks are doing or interested in doing. That's what this graph is showing right here, it kind of gives us an indication in the blue, I know it's probably a little hard to see, but. In the blue over on the right-hand side, it shows that a lot of folks have been already engaged in doing. Waste reduction or conservation measures, so that kind of gives us an idea of what to build on. And then in the community opportunity area, we saw folks. Or the respondents laying out that they are either getting ready to do or they're interested in looking at things like battery storage or solar panels. So really some of that, that microgrid and renewable energy focus, so. Asking these type of questions just helps kind of get a lay of the land of, of what the community is, is thinking of and ready to do. So where we're coming into with our next steps is we're finishing out the greenhouse gas analysis, drafting up those reports. This is the inventory forecast and targets, next we'll move into measures and actions development. Like I said, that's a really iterative process, so we do a lot of opportunities and areas where we can gain feedback from all of the different stakeholders. Once those measures and actions are solidified, we're able to move into quantification of those greenhouse gas reductions. Throughout this entire time, we'll be executing our engagement plan with public stakeholder feedback and. Are, we'll be attending a couple of city council meetings to keep the council updated on where we're going and gain that feedback. As we move through this process with our first meeting coming up next week. And with that, I will stop and, you know, we'll take any questions or comments and really appreciate you having us here tonight.
Okay, you have time for questions then, Mike?
Go back to that slide, Cutting Day.
Okay.
I, I can't read those color captions, anybody else? What are they?
Ah, I'm sorry about that, so the, the four different colors, the blue is have, have you done, red is planning to do. Orange is interested in doing and green is not interested in doing at all. And then down along the bottom is a whole series of asking. Different strategy questions, so it includes things like replacing gas appliances, installing solar panels, walking and biking instead of driving. Separating food and green waste, composting, replacing lawns with drought-resistant landscaping. And what we're taking a look at here, this is just super high level, is taking a look at. What it looks like folks have already been doing in the community and then where some of the interest area lies, and so that's where we were able to, to see with this. The, the blue spikes and kind of what we have circled in green is that really that, that solid waste diversion and that. Conservation of water, that's been an area that a lot of community members of, or the respondents. I'll say the respondents because we haven't, you know, accessed all of the community yet at this point, the respondents of this particular pop-up. Have already been participating in. And then the indicated interest or planning areas, we're more focused on that. Whether it's battery storage or solar panels, some of that renewable energy that can be done at the, the home.
You answered my question, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm interested in knowing what your target market is, is your target market a? An individual resident of Monterey who will follow these. Statements of good intent, is your target market the City of Monterey that would develop laws and ordinances? That would force the individuals who live here to comply with certain Climate Action Plan requirements? These are a lot of statements of good intent underneath the red, orange, blue and green bars. But it is, is the idea to develop a set of ordinances?
That's a great question, there's a number of different ways that the Climate Action Plan is meant to. It get enacted, it does include city actions, kind of our structural change actions, which would be kind of ordinances, so. For example, the current building codes as they come up have things like solar panels need to be installed on. Certain homes or in certain buildings and so there's some components like that, where it's. An ordinance, something that's kind of enacting it, there's also opportunities for community members to be involved. By providing education and engagement programs as one of the actions within different measures. This is an opportunity to, to really engage with the community and. Provide information and provide resources for them to be able to make some of these changes on their own. There's also opportunities for, you know, when we talk about funding, whether it's the city's funding or whether it's going after different grants that you're able to provide rebates so that. Community members can do things like replace gas appliances or add in battery storage. There's, it's kind of a multi-faceted. Plan of accessing individuals. Utilizing the city to both support what individuals can do as well as developing, whether it's ordinances or even projects that can assist with. Changing behavior.
And just to add to that a little bit too, I think a lot of this, the intent here is, as Erica said, is to really reach out to the community. And sort of meet them partially where their interests are as well, there's a lot of indications of where our main levels we need to reduce are. But we also need to find out what people have done or where their interests lie so that we can, it does kind of color our policies or where we target our programs, for example. With 3CE, that new energy group we've talked about, that is an energy alternative where we have a brand-new joint powers authority where those revenues are coming to us as local agencies. To decide where those program funds go, so if you want to encourage folks to purchase electric vehicles or put solar panels on, or if we want to look at some transportation project. We can use, for example, information from the public to color some of those decisions in some of those directions as well, but we get an indication from the climate plan. On where the main areas we need to cut are, so when we ask the public, what are you doing and what would you want to do, it helps give us an idea of. Where we're likely to formulate successful programs and making reductions in those areas.
Okay, in the area, the targeted areas, there's no mention of sea level rise, that's a climate action.
Right, and again, these are, a lot of this, as I kind of mentioned in the, in the beginning, a lot, the Climate Action Plan is, is focused on mitigation, so what we're trying to do. Is cut down those impacts, which we have to do adaptations for, like for example, sea level rise. For when we have a sea level rise adaptation plans, that means we need to nourish a beach, armor the beach, get out of the way, right? We need to take an action based on a symptom of that disease, here we are trying to kill the disease so the water stops coming up. So our job here is to say, how can we decrease that impact, how can we stop that impact? And that comes from decreasing our energy use in buildings, decreasing our transportation impacts and those sorts of things, so. It's kind of a yin yang kind of collaboration between mitigation and adaptation when we're talking about climate action.
Yeah, and if I can just build on that a little bit, because I know the commission's very interested in sea level rise. Our planning team led by Levi and Christie were successful in getting an eight hundred thousand dollar grant. From the California Coastal Commission, we're in the process right now of reviewing proposals to. Develop a, and study a sea level rise adaptation strategy and that's going to fit very nicely into. Our work that we're really starting to make progress on with our local coastal plan, so. While it's not directly related to the cap, as Ted described, it is an effort that you will start to. it is an effort that you will start to see progress on in the upcoming year.
Okay. Peter?
I just want to thank the presentation, the presenters here for very interesting and informative analysis of all of the issues here.
Yes, Mike.
This seems to me to be very small bites. When you compare our efforts in Monterey to the, the country of China putting in a new coal-powered power plant daily, we're not, we're not, we're not even touching a problem. We're, we're just sort of in, in the way of the big guys. So is, is there, is there some, some way we can, we can scale this up a whole lot?
Really, a lot of it comes from, from working together and setting examples. Like we're, there's a, there's a lot of other communities, as I mentioned, Rincon themselves has worked with over eighty communities in California alone to develop climate action plans. I mean, in my opinion, things would be a little different, I think internationally. But I mean, that, I think when we talk about things that are a threat to everyone, I mean, if we're really serious, we would treat those things like nuclear proliferation or human atrocities or things like that that are at risk to everybody in the world. And those countries that are taking part in that type of thing would be treated accordingly or put sanctions against or things like that if we really want to get serious about holding people accountable that are having impacts for the entire world when a lot of us are trying to improve those impacts. But we lead, the United States or us lead by example, right? We, we can't say we're leaders when it's convenient and then when the time comes to step up, start pointing fingers. Our job is to say, this is how you do it. We're a better, stronger city because of what we're doing and you can become successful like us. This is what we expect other governments to do and we're doing it now. We're leading by example, which is the best way, in my opinion, to lead any effort.
Thank you.
I'm curious, you mentioned in the presentation about doing energy retrofits within the city. What has been accomplished on that front?
Yeah, it's been a while. We're probably due for potentially another one. Some of those are a bit outdated. That's some of the, the work we did in the previous Climate Action Plan. We worked, worked with PG&E and Ambag with the Energy Watch Program. And we actually had people come through and do surveys. They literally would look at our lighting fixtures, at our HVAC systems, and would make recommendations on upgrades and retrofits. And in some, a lot of cases, there was even grants and things like that available to make those, as well as the energy savings that came from making those, those retrofits. So actually, those opportunities do come around every so often to work with another organization to do those evaluations again. And we've had some recently where, but we did run into a little bit of an issue of discussing whether we kind of need to go out for an RFP or how we choose a provider to do that in order potentially to give us another walkthrough and update it. But we have done it in the past and seen quite good savings from that. But it ultimately literally is walking through facilities, literally taking inventory of all of, you know, our lighting, our HVAC, our heating systems and finding out how we can improve it. But yeah, we are definitely due for, for an update. It's been, like I mentioned, some of the figures you saw there were from, back from 2007 to 2017. We were pretty active in a, in a good section. And now, like I say, I think we're good, we're pretty due for a good update there and we probably see some good results from that.
Well, great. Thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
Anybody in chambers have a comment to make on this?
Well, Lauren Moffett.
Oh, you might, is your mic on?
Pardon?
Is your mic on?
Yeah, well, it's going now, but can we start again from the beginning?
Sure.
Thank you. Can we start from the beginning? Because I haven't, because you asked a question, so thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Trees, train, conservation, solar on all city rooftops, mass transit are our weapons against mass destruction. Please consider them. I would also like you to consider a plan to plant thousands of eucalyptus and use cypress trees all along our coastline to offset the heating of the bay, which is created by traffic and the parking lots, which this body has created without the necessary mitigation methods. You know, it starts here. You're, you're the most powerful body that we have. It starts here and everyone else goes, yes, we'll do it, whatever you ask. So you're it. And the sunflower starfish, they can't even live out here. They've gone extinct out here because it's the base too hot. So if you planted trees all along, and eucalyptus, I suggest because they tolerate salt, they don't take a lot of water, contrary to what they're saying in, if you call Australia, they'll tell you they grow in very hot, dry climates. And cypress, all along the coastline, you could cool the bay down. And that, and that parking lot needs to have at least twenty-four big, big trees. At least, maybe fifty would be more like it, and it would be beautiful. And you need to plant as many trees as you have in Carmel and PG here in all the, on all the pavements. Lights take a tremendous amount of energy. I have solar on my houseboat. And believe me, I can turn on one little twenty-five watt bulb, and it just gobbles up my, my battery. It's amazing what lights do. And there is at that old garbage container, at the end of the wharf, there's a light on there twenty-four seven. And no one's ever there. It's a locked up room. So assess all your light fixtures. And so I think trees are the most important thing and because they absorb CO2, car pollutants, and they're beautiful. So please consider them. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Erica, anybody online?
There are two hands raised. I'll call in order of hands raised. Brian Rosen?
Haven't we heard from him before?
Hi. For the last time today, nice to see you again. I just want to, those were magnificent trees in the Fisherman's Wharf parking lot. And there were so many of them and they were so huge. And I understand the desire to be able to get more parking spaces and not have to clean up a lot of needles, pine needles and cypress needles. But they were there for many, many years and somehow we managed to muddle through and live with them. You know, so maybe it would be a good idea to admit a mistake and just put those trees back in and take up a little pavement and put in some more trees. I've seen eucalyptus trees in the desert. They, they are, they do grow very, very fast. You know, another thing is, of course, there are forces outside of Monterey that have a huge impact, like thing, we live in a disposable society. Washing machines and refrigerators might last five or six years as opposed to the old ones. Huge amount of energy living in a disposable society where things are made poorly and they have to keep being manufactured over and over again. But we, there are different things you can do. A lot of apartment complexes don't allow clotheslines, which is solar power, which is a really inexpensive way to reduce emissions. Maybe there could be some kind of ordinance so people will be allowed to dry their clothes on a clothesline. Converting to gas is very expensive. I don't know if the public would want to do that because it's much more expensive to heat your house by gas than by electricity. If they can, people have a hard time barely getting by. Maybe the public could be surveyed on the train. How many of them would rather have the train than versus the surf bus? For example, how many of them would use the train versus, say, a Greyhound or the surf bus? Let's see what the public has to say. And there's a lot, the, the US military is supposed to be the world's biggest emitter of pollution, especially when there's a war going on that we're doing. We're, that's another story. But we're putting so much money into the military and we're neglecting our planet and our people. And we're doing some pretty bad things with the military industrial complex. I would like to see the bicycle program like they have in Santa Barbara where they have bicycles on every street corner for rent and the tourists get on them and they have, they get to drop them off somewhere else. It's like ten minutes of the electric bicycle to get to Carmel. There's so much that can be done here in Monterey and better mass transit, et cetera, et cetera. And I hope that you'll take us, listen to some of these ideas like the clothesline and the train and try to survey the public and get their feelings about these things and and try to make a big difference here for making a more bicycle-friendly city. And, and eucalyptus are beautiful trees. They don't have to.
Land Watch has their hand raised?
Super.
And they've been asked to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Laura Davis. I'm the Deputy Director of Land Watch. Over the years, Land Watch has supported the city's efforts to devise and implement more sustainable and climate-friendly policies. In 2021, in collaboration with EcoData Lab, Land Watch provided a zero-carbon 2045 strategy outline for the city. We are encouraged to see that many of our suggestions are included in the goals for the 2025 Updated Climate Action Plan and in the methods for achieving those goals. We fully support the decarbonization of new and existing buildings, VMT electrification and reduction through increased opportunities for public transit, walking and biking, and organic waste diversion and carbon sequestration. In addition to the recommended actions in today's staff report, the Planning Commission should ensure that the VMT analysis uses an origin destination model and direct the consultants to include an evaluation of whether building more housing to address Monterey's jobs, housing imbalance would help reduce VMT and to what extent in line with the city's rent allocation and housing element. Thank you for your efforts to implement more climate-friendly policies and practices in Monterey and for your consideration of our comments.
Thank you. So I'm assuming there's no action on our part for this right now. We just?
That's correct. The purpose of this was for the commission to receive the presentation for the introduction of the project. And no action is necessary at this time.
Great. Thank you. So Commissioner comments, does anybody have anything to pass on today? No? Yes, Mike?
It came up today again. Actually, two different mentions of, of our housing crisis. I read a lot about, from across the country and we're not the Lone Ranger in this issue. And a lot of people now are saying, if you have vacant commercial buildings, convert them to housing because typically the fees are already paid for water and hookup and so forth. So you can redo that and reduce costs. And I just, I'd say this as a comment, maybe we need to look a little closer. We have a lot, we have a lot of commercial spaces becoming available. Some cities now are just forbidding people to put in another business until they get some of their housing accomplishment completed. I just say we need to, to open our eyes to, to other alternatives. I don't know what all the, our planning department is doing in that regard, but I just throw it out there because I've had three people ask me in the last two weeks about that topic. Thank you.
Mike? I was lucky, I attended the city's parking meeting that they had. And it was very interesting. And I'm not sure if members of the commission would be interested, but
Watched it.
I'd love to have them come back and present that here. And so we can at least engage and have that information available because part of the housing that we're dealing with, parking always comes up at it. And the new technologies, the new plans that they're looking at implementing would probably be really worthwhile for us to hear. So I was wondering if that's something that we could agendize, maybe not have the contractor come, but maybe city staff could do the presentation and let us have that as a group, that same, that same knowledge.
Workshop?
Not a workshop, but just passing on what they did at the, the presentation that they made to, at the public meeting. Maybe have it here for people that weren't able to, to see it.
And that was a presentation from our parking staff?
Yeah.
So it works.
Parking staff.
I can look into that and see what all that entailed. And as you mentioned, there's a contractor involved. So we can, we can work as city staff to see what the possibilities are of agendizing that. I suppose it'd be for informational purposes, like for presentation.
Just a presentation. Maybe, I don't think we'd have to have the contractor here as they did for the, the meeting. But maybe city staff could just present the same information. And I was particularly interested in the technology, where are the automatic license plate readers? You know, ways of, you know, trying to look at as we end up having higher density housing, how parking is going to be affecting that? And then the policies that, you know, we want to address in terms of how that's going to affect quality of life and housing.
Sure. It sounds like if, if, I'll, I'll look into it if the video is available for online viewing. It may be more effective to just share the link to the video. So I'll take a look at what those options are. I'll, I'll just note that, you know, we're, we're seeing, and this commission has, has heard and considered parking reductions in a lot of areas of our city that, when it comes to residential uses. So I'll say the, the city is pretty, has, has been pretty open as far as it goes to reducing parking standards for residential uses. But sure, I can look into that and if it's available online, I'll just share that with the commission.
Great. Thank you. Any comments, Levi, from you?
Other than what's in the board, just noting that we do have tentative items scheduled for the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. So hope to see you all there.
Great. Super. Thank you, everybody. Wrap the meeting up at about six o'clock.
Yee-haw.